Good evening. This is the City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1416. Can we please stand for the pledge?
(inaudible).
Sorry?
That's all right. You can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Please bear with us a few seconds as the... Have you read the minutes? I just call the roll.
This is the work session. Work session.
Oh, it's a different one. I got it. Isn't that just saying?
Yeah. It's not the meeting. It's the work session.
Oh, I didn't see anything. Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize. It was not on my schedule that this is a work session. And you all want to do a presentation? Okay.
Yeah, this is the, for lack of a better term, the proposed mall developers. And we wanted to welcome them here tonight and allow them to make a presentation here to City Council. And also, it's being recorded and also be available for replay on Way Cross as... so that other citizens can see it as well. And we have with us today is representatives from Hillwood. And you can introduce yourselves and come on up and tell us a little bit about the proposal that you have for the redevelopment of the Forest Fair Mall.
Yeah. Good evening. I'm Ben Davis with Hillwood. This is Jay Smith with Hillwood as well. So we're... I'm on the transaction side, so kind of spearheading the development. Jay's on the development side. So kind of the pre-construction and construction process as well. And we're a team here. Jay comes with 25 years of industrial experience from Duke Realty. I was an industrial broker for almost 10 years in our office in Kenwood. So we're local. We know the market. We've got good, deep experience. So we appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you tonight and kind of show you our concept plan. And we really hope that this is a forum for you guys to share, to ask questions, to share thoughts. But we'll kind of take you from how we got here to where we think this is going. But feel free to chime in and with any questions or anything, we hope it's conversational. And Pat Woodside's here as well. He's our... an attorney helping us on the project as well. We don't have a real robust presentation here, so like I said, ask questions. So I think we'll do a little update, kind of tell you why we think industrial makes sense at the site, look at the current site plan, and then we have some pictures of some other developments we've done that will kind of give you a feel for look, feel, and functionality of what these buildings will look like. So we put the site under contract in October of '21. And tried to figure it out. We were chasing some users as well. And then in February of '22, we applied for a demo grant, which was supposed to be rewarded in May of '22, but May of '22 turned into October of '22. So it kind of pushed all our timelines back a little bit. And we had to get an extension as well. They didn't retroactively move the date out. So it was going to expire in May of this year. But we got an extension into June of 2024. So we know the timeline's tight, but we think we have a window here if we can get momentum to bring this thing down. And obviously, first things first, we need to get it rezoned and entitled so we can build what we want to build. Always had a lot of questions about Kohl's. I know they're a pillar of the community and a lot of the citizens use them. So they like the site. It's a good store for them. So we're gonna leave them on site, and we'll see that in the site plan. And that comes with a healthy investment on our side for them to do an exterior and interior refresh, parking lots, facades, things like that. So it should look good. And, you know, we've come to terms with them, so they're going to stay on site. And then from a timeline perspective, our goal would be to get in the queue for rezoning, what, August?
Submit hopefully end of late July, early August. And we would like to have it hopefully completed by the end of the year is our kind of big picture timeframe right now.
Yeah. And so then as soon as we... And our goal would be to close by year-end and then start demolition. Demolition is probably nine to 10 months. It's a million and a half square feet. So it's a lengthy demo process. And then we'd start construction on Phase One and deliver two buildings out of the gate. So we'd probably deliver those nine months later. So it's probably, you know, 18 months from now if everything goes according to plan. So... So why industrial? You know, the world's shifted a little bit. I think COVID shifted the office market potentially forever. I don't know. I'm not a predictor of future trends. But it's a big site. It's a 90-acre site, right? So it's hard to figure out, you know, what really fits here. And you look at like a mixed-use, and most of a mixed-use project has a very heavy multifamily component to it. And that didn't... You know, the municipalities have expressed some concern around more apartments and things like that. So we didn't see a path on mixed-use. And then, you know, retail, you know, it's retail today, and it struggled for a long time, right? So we try to use common sense when we spend time and energy and money on pursuits. But we think it's a great site, and we think we could be successful there by building industrial product. You look at... There's a good labor story. There's obviously great access. And the type of buildings that we could deliver on this site are very similar to what you see in Fairfield and Westchester and kind of that tri-county area. So we believe in the site. We think it'll do well if we can figure it out. So let's go to the project update. I kind of got ahead of myself here. So anyway, the demo grant was awarded in October of '22. It's $7.9 million, which covers roughly 80% of our demolition costs. The total demo budget's $10.5 million. And like I mentioned, the grant got extended to June of 2024. And the state, I think, you know, one thing that we're trying to voice as we're in these meetings is... So we were able to get an extension, and we've spoken to the state about the potential of the need for another extension. Sounds like they'd only be willing to do that in the event of progress. So I don't think we're going to just be able to ask for another extension if we haven't at least started the demolition. So we do think kind of time is of the essence and, you know, our window's now to get moving and try to formalize this a little bit. Mentioned the Kohl's retrofit. We think that'll look good. It'll be a, you know, kind of function like a... Look and feel like a new store. And yeah, the timeline, you know, four to five months hopefully for rezoning, closed by year-end, nine to 10 months a demo, and then Phase One would be nine months to deliver two buildings. If I could zoom in a little here, see if I can do that. So this is the site plan with Kohl's staying. So we would deliver four buildings in total. There'd be two phases. So the two buildings to the south, the ones that front on 275, would be Phase One. And those buildings would front on 275. So the back parts here where you're seeing the truck courts, you know, that's where all the trucks would go. But the fronts would have nice facades and glass and office entries and things like that. And we'll share some pictures with it. It's a total investment of about $150 million. And, you know, part of the challenge with this site is partly the complexity when you think of two municipalities, three school districts, getting it rezoned. But the other challenge is that the site has some hair on it. I mean, we have to pay to acquire it. There's an existing TIF that fully matures in 2034 that has a balance of about $11.5 million. And then while we got a demo grant, which really helps, and I think, you know, we're not the first group to look at this site, but I think having the demo grant has allowed us to find a path here. So it's complicated, and it's expensive. But we think we have a window here to figure it out. When you think about these types of buildings, it's what we call rear-loaded. So those are interior truck courts. These aren't your traditional distribution centers when you think of an Amazon or a DHL or, you know, those types of e-commerce companies that are cross-dock where there's trucks on both sides and they're moving product through. So we think this is more of a business park setting, you know, look and feel, higher end, higher image. And you attract different types of tenants, and it's really a mix, right? You're gonna hit some singles, you're gonna hit some doubles, you might hit a home run. But you could find a manufacturer, you could find an assembly company, you could find a distribution company. But it's a really flexible product type to have a kind of diverse mix of tenants in there. And then the other piece, and Jay, you want to talk to the traffic distribution?
So on the traffic side, so in conversations with the city of Fairfield, we've started to work on a traffic study. We've really just kind of started to get into it. But one of the things that we've talked about is we would like to have all the traffic, trucks especially, to come in at this first intersection as you come off the 275 ramp there. So basically, as you come off the interchange, and we think all of our traffic essentially will be coming from 275, that you'll be coming in, you'll come in this drive here, and then there'll be access points where you'll be able to circulate either to the interior truck courts or from a vehicular standpoint. You've still got the Ring Road kind of around the outside of the existing mall here that, you know, people, employees that work here can come from the north or the south. But all the truck traffic and distribution traffic essentially will be coming off 275. They will come in and come back out of this exit point here. And so we've really just started to work on the traffic study to kind of pull that together. I believe all the intersections on the north side of 275 are all controlled by the city of Fairfield. And so we've started to meet with the city and their consultants to get that process going. Given the fact that there was an existing mall there, and it is a substantial thoroughfare, we think that there's capacity to handle this redevelopment here. There could be some significant timing improvements, but overall, we feel like the capacity is there to handle the development.
Will any of the traffic flow take the path of the Ring Road? Just trying to visualize.
So south of 275?
Right.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, most of our users, you know, this is all, you know, interstate commerce-type stuff. So outside of, you know, employee traffic, vehicular traffic, I think any kind of, you know, truck traffic itself would essentially get back on the interstate. I certainly can't say that they wouldn't go south, but I don't really see that as their typical pathway. There could be some local businesses here that have local distribution, but, you know, again, essentially, I think most of the traffic would be getting on the interstate.
I have a question regarding the position of the buildings. It looks like a large part of the buildings are on the northwest school district side. Is that by design or...?
I wouldn't say that's intentional. That's really just the way the site lays out. You know, talking about the complexity of the site, obviously, we have, you know, two counties, two municipalities, the three school districts. We did not, you know, lay the buildings out to, you know, to be in or out of any particular district. That's just the way the boundaries happen to fall.
Okay. So we're just looking at a tax base for our district, and so I'll just looking at the way the position of the sites.
Understood. And then this here, this is just an example. This is an industrial building that we did actually down in Nashville. It has similar size of these particular buildings. It is a rear-loaded facility. But as far as the entrance features and the facade, this is the type of product that we've, you know, developed in another location. I don't think this product, project will look like this, but this is an example of the level of quality that, you know, we're kind of talking about. There will be some sort of entry feature at the corners of the building, you know, kind of like what you have here at the end of the building. And then at the midpoint or maybe the quarter points of the building, there will be some sort of interior entrance. We think these buildings will be set up probably with four tenant entries, so maybe we can have four to six tenants. I mean, obviously, we like to have the less tenants for us, the better, but these buildings are fairly flexible. And from a size standpoint, they can probably have a tenant as small as, you know, 40,000 or 50,000 feet all the way up to a full building user. We're working on current site plans right now and coming up with what we think our initial look of the building wants to be. We've still got, you know, a couple of weeks of kind of pulling that together. And we knew we had this meeting here tonight with you guys. Once we get to the point where we're ready to come in and share that, we'll set a meeting up and come in and sit down and show you what we think this is going to look like specifically. We know there's concerns about the look of the buildings, obviously from the interstate. Fairfield, you know, has some concerns from their standpoint, just making sure that this is a Class A development. You know, Hillwood, we develop across the country, and we think we're one of the better developers, so.
Yeah. And just to piggyback on his last point, you know, we build speculatively, so we build without a tenant. So we try to build flexible buildings. And these new, modern type of buildings, these are typically, you know, regional or national companies. You know, we're not going to have an auto body shop in there, right? That's not the type of use here. But yeah, we think design and look and feel matter, and we, you know, we think it helps you attract better tenants if they, you know, can understand the quality of the building. So we've developed 7 million square feet in Cincinnati in the last seven years. So... And we've developed 280 million across the country. So we, you know, we've got the breadth to figure it out. But yeah, this is just indicative of a, you know, tilt or precast Class A building. And we landscape, we over-landscape them according to Jay. We put too much glass on them. But, you know, we want them to look good because we want to win deals and have good tenants in there. So I think that's kind of it. So, you know, any questions, thoughts?
Just a question that is regards to your process or your project. Their phase of your project where you maybe take a poll, just communications out to see, sort of like getting that, getting the beta out and seeing if you're going to get some bikes and see what type of feedback you might get in regards to the tenants to help drive that design flow.
Yeah. So it's... Yeah, no, that's a really good question. It's tricky on a site like this because the... We have so much to get through to be able to give them a proposal with timelines and economics, right? Because we don't even have it zoned yet. We don't have it demoed yet. And so it's kind of a chicken and an egg thing. And we have had users that are brand names that we would all recognize reach out, but just with the uncertainty around, you know, they all work in definitive, hey, we need a building by Q4 of '23, or we need a building of Q2 of '24, right? It's some need, some new initiative that's driving the need, and we just aren't equipped right now to propose on any of that because of the uncertainty. And then the amount of time to get through zoning, to bring it down, to construct the buildings and things like that. But I think, I do think that, you know, should we get to the end of the year and close on the property and get through this process, I mean, then that becomes more real. And then, you know, Jay and I are designing a real site plan, and we have definitive timelines of, hey, we got nine to 10 months of demo, and we got nine to 12 months of construction, and we have excess land. So that kind of gives validation to the, you know, to the project where I think the looks will be more real. Because we wouldn't, today as we sit, we wouldn't be comfortable to propose on anything because there's so many unknowns.
All right. And most people aren't looking 18 months out.
Yeah.
For people that go in these kinds of buildings, you know, it's typically six months to a year. So we need to get all the things in place that would allow us to make those types of proposals.
Quick question on the... You said you've done extensive building here locally in Hamlin County or around the area. What's the vacancy rate look on the seven... Was it 7 million locally?
Well, yeah, that's just...
For the square foot footage, what's the vacancy rate look like around for these types of buildings?
For these types of buildings, right now, we're at 3.9%. So historically, equilibrium has been 7% to 8%, and we haven't seen that in probably six or seven years. It's certainly an uncertain time, and, you know, there's been some space that's come online. And there's been, you know, new deliveries and new construction. But the fundamentals are still really strong, and there haven't been a ton of new starts just with the debt environment the way it is. So I think we're in a really healthy spot right now. I think it's going to be a little bumpy for a little bit, but we have some time here to get it zoned, to get it demoed, and hopefully, you know, we're coming out of it with some momentum. But even if, I forget the numbers, but if all the space under construction delivered fully vacant, which it won't, because there's been some deals that have been signed on stuff that's under construction, we'd be at like 8% or something like that, which was historically equilibrium, so.
Is it at all possible that any of that space could be used for healthcare, like physician offices or... I don't know, but...
Yeah, here, let me... So we have to obviously go through the zoning process, right? And this line here is the Fairfield's to the north and then Forest Park down here. So we do have this outlot for future redevelopment, and I should have mentioned that when we kicked this off. But it's a five-acre site, and we've met with Fairfield numerous times, and that's going to be something that's not industrial, whether it's a hotel, whether it's a physician's office. You know, I think we'll have to figure that out, but it's kind of a natural buffer with the Kohl's store, with CISA Financial. So that's going to be something that isn't industrial.
Are there any more questions?
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate your time and energy, and we'll... Obviously, we'll be in touch and we'll be talking in the next several weeks, several months. But we'll be back with the City Council to discuss further the proposal, and I'm sure we'll be back with you with some suggestions and feedback.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Pat?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and I know that you all generally are shy, but I think really that's what we're looking for here, is to give you the bunch of information we have, but also feedback, positive, negative, whatever. You know, you had mentioned that you do have a few different school districts, but we'll have some issues to talk to. So right now, because of the, all the things that are going to go into this, there is a long meantime with a lot of expense. And so to try to address whatever concerns exist as soon as we possibly can is of the utmost importance at this point. So whatever your thoughts are, you know, Don has some athletic communication, so to talk to Hammer directly, obviously, we're both willing to come back and talk, or we're good about whatever would be needed, so please don't...
Sort of basis of the northwest and wooden, winwood side of this project is totally based on industrial.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
And just make a reference to the comment that was... The question that was asked by the young lady there, and if you commented about the possibility of something different in regards to Fairfield side, so...
Well, that's just this out parcel here, which is really just the way the site lays out. It's just purely a function of layout. This is where the garage is today. Kohl's is obviously, you know, Kohl's is staying. And we couldn't even, we couldn't even put a little building there. We're not very good at little buildings. But, you know, it's five acres. You could maybe put like 50,000 square feet or something, so...
Yeah, it depends on the use.
Yeah.
Our intentions would be to sell that off.
Yeah.
We are essentially industrial developers, so that's where our expertise is. We're not retail developers. We're not medical office developers. That's not really what we do.
I don't want to forget, we've got the representative here from Fairfield as well, and thank them for showing up. They invited us to their meeting. The mayor and I attended their council meeting where this was presented to Fairfield. Because of the way it lays out, it's both of our jurisdictions, so it'll take a joint effort on the part of Fairfield and the City of Forest Park to rezone this or depending on where we're moving with it. But at least it'll take both of us to get it done. So they're a great partner, and we look forward to working with them in this project. Appreciate them coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for your time.
The next item on the agenda is the police contract. Mr. Jones?
Yes, thanks, Mrs.
Thank you.
We have the... On tonight's agenda for the discussion here, as well as on the agenda for the actual council meeting, will be the police contracts. We have two of them. We have the patrol officers and then the supervisory agreement as well. They're both, they mirror each other. And we finally reached an agreement with both of them. And the contract will begin in 1/1 of '23, so it'll be retroactive to the first of the year. It's a three-year contract, so it'll expire on 12/31/2025. There are some minor changes to the contract that aren't reflective as wages and longevity, but basically, the minor changes are dues deduction, remittance, that's clarified, probationary period, the use of sick leave, and vacation is again clarified. We've added language that made things more specific. Grievance procedures, discipline, vacation language, again, these are all clarifications of existing language. Juneteenth was added as a holiday. Sick leave usage language was clarified. It's a bit more restrictive. The merit bonuses were increased slightly. The detective's uniform allowance was deleted, and it is a three-year agreement. From the financial side, which is, you know, the main changes, obviously, we reviewed comparable wages across the area. It was determined that Forest Park was lagging behind some of the others, some of the other districts, and it put us in a less competitive environment. And you notice we've lost a lot of policemen over the last couple of years. And police officers in general, that position is highly sought after and is very competitive now among the cities because of the shortage of police officers. Essentially, what we had to do is we had to, we looked at this as a, we needed to adjust the beginning, at the beginning, so to begin with a 6% raise in year one and then 2.5% raises in year two and three. The 6% was basically, we looked at that as about a 3.5% adjustment, so to get us up to about where we should have been. And then the increase of, again, another 3.5% that would have been the increase. These put us pretty competitive and about in the middle of all the other surrounding districts. Longevity was removed from the contract several years ago, but we've added that back to this contract. And we've added a recruitment bonus, which basically, if an officer is successful in recruiting someone, either for another existing police officer or bringing on someone who becomes a police officer here in the City of Forest Park, we've added a $2,000 bonus as a way to encourage our police officers to reach out to their friends, their family, and people they know, and to the schools and so forth, to help us recruit and tell them what a great job it is here in the City of Forest Park and what an honor it is to be a Forest Park policeman. So we think it's a good contract. It puts our police officers essentially where they need to be, and it makes us very competitive as we're trying to not only maintain our current police force but add to it. We have a lot of openings, and this will allow us to be competitive in the current job openings. And we'd like to recommend that the City Council pass both of these contracts this evening.
Okay. Then the next item is the code of ordinance you want to discuss, or the salary resolution.
Yeah. Well, the salary resolution goes with the police contracts.
Right.
As part of the police contracts because they have salary changes.
Okay, then the next item is the code of ordinance you want to discuss, or the salary resolution?
Yeah, well, the salary, salary resolution goes with the police contracts.
Right.
As part of the peace, police contracts because they have salary changes and we'll need to pass a salary resolution to reflect those changes that are in those contracts. So if the police, if the contract passes, we'll need to pass the salary resolution as well.
So it's back date to first of the year, right?
Yes, it's effective back to the first of the year.
Can I ask you?
Mm-hmm.
In, involved with the, the contract and agreement, who's already involved from the police side perspective?
They have FOP representatives, two rep, two, they have two FOP representatives, one for each union and we, we had simultaneous negotiations with each one, obviously they could be a little different, but the main, obviously the main issues, we, we're pretty comfortable with the language we have in, in the contract, if it needs to be clarified, we'd clarify it, but the, uh, in terms of the wages, they're pretty, pretty much, they, they go along the same, same way in terms of the increases, they're pretty, pretty standard and across both unions.
Unions.
Yeah, but yeah, they usually have fraternal over police as their bargaining agent.
The next item, D, adoption settlement supplemental to the code of ordinance, this on here, this right here.
Okay, that is, let me make sure I get the right one, I believe, is that the one with the changes to the start time?
No, that's the changes to the code, it was on our, it was on the work session April, I believe, but we have one in May, so it's not handed back, but.
Okay.
It's an ordinance that's going to be read and by title on the same time tonight, but this updates all of the legislation you guys passed last year and puts it into the book.
Oh, yes, okay, that's the, the update for the, yes, okay, um, yeah, that bas, yeah, exactly, so yeah, we, we do that on an annual basis, so that's what that legislation would do is, is codify those, uh, those ordinances.
Okay, the hard one, council meeting time.
The, in order to, we spoke with Mayor Brown and, with Law Director and in order to change the, officially change it on a, on a ongoing basis, rather than having to do a motion every time you want to change the start time, if we're going to change the start time to, let's say to seven or seven thirty or whatever time it is, I will need to pass an ordinance that amends the, the current ordinance, as it sits right now, it's, it's codified in our ordinance that says eight o'clock, so this is the ordinance, if we want to change that, allows us to discuss it, I don't think it's on the agenda for this evening, and it is on the council meeting, okay? So you can have the first reading and, um, or a second, depending on, you know, whether it's seven o'clock or seven thirty, if we've reached an agreement on the time, this would, this would implement it on a permanent basis and then if you wanted to have it at eight o'clock, you could, that would be the change to eight o'clock, so the normal time would then move to seven, per this agree, per this.
So how would this, this time change reflect on our intermittent council work sessions? Because we sometimes say we don't have it on the gen, on the agenda and then when I look, I'm like, boy, that's a whole plate full right there, how could we not, so how, how are we gonna approach, you know, in my mind, you know, I would think, well, we should be more appropriate with the, the schedule of work session out of the Monday, there's work session and then council out of the, the council meeting, that's just my.
I agree with that a hundred percent, I think, I think that would, if it starts at seven, the ability to start a work session before that, um, you know, we'd be starting at five thirty or six, um, so we'd need to really make sure that we had our regularly scheduled work sessions so we, so we wouldn't be limited.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that would make, that, that, that's the, the good and the bad of it, that it, that it cuts into the ability to start a work session before council meeting like this one.
And if it better position us to, to be more attuned with actually positioning the, the process of ordinance and resolutions to work during work session, it kind of makes that, that scheduled meeting more at a point of saying, we should be actively engaging in our work sessions when they're supposed to.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion on it.
Very good point.
So as a, as a council collectively, are we in a agreement, majority or so in a agreement, that we change the time or are we leaning more towards leaving it as it is? I know we had some discussion about it in our last meeting, but I wasn't sure if that was something collectively we were gonna do, because it almost seems, although there are instances as a, as a council, we may split and or not agree on everything, but we have jobs and we have other stuff, so I was, my hope is that collectively, at least the majority of us come to a consensus of either changing the time or keeping it the same, so that's what I was wondering about.
As far as my, my opinion, really, that change from eight to seven, I don't, I don't have an, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
I would just say that, you know, in my, my point of, okay, we changing our council meeting from eight to seven, let's be a little more disciplined with how we manage our work sessions.
Absolutely, oh, I agree with you one hundred percent, I mean, I think that is the, I agree with that.
Yeah, so that's.
I, I agree with that, but I'm, you know.
I'm, I'm fine with this, yeah, because I, my position with my work, I, I don't see a problem with it for me, but.
Right, right, right.
But you noticing how long this work session is running tonight also? I mean, if we start council meeting at seven, I said, if you notice how long this work session is running tonight.
Right.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if we have another work session that this long, at seven o'clock, we're not going to be ready to start council meeting.
I think.
Understood.
Yeah, and I think the premise, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the premise or the idea is to have work session on days that we're supposed to have work session and have council on days that we're supposed to have council, instead of substituting or not having it that particular day and then doubling up, that becomes a little bit of an infringe, I think, or inconvenience or whatnot, so if it's the first and the third that we are having council, then let's have council, second and fourth, let's have work session, you know? The people elected, that's what, you know, that's, that's been the expectation. Even after we had our tax town hall, I felt like we should have had that meeting right after that and not, even if we, you know, didn't have X, Y, and Z agenda items, so I'm perfectly fine with seven, I just want us to, if we can adhere to, you know, the day work session or council regardless, so that we're not having to do exactly what you're referring to, first vice mayor.
Okay, the next item is F participation in the transit infrastructure fund program, Mrs. Sylvester, that one is yours, you want to set that, but you want to take it down?
Yeah, I've got it right up here from Scott, if you would, if you could take that. The, um, this is the sort of grant, I believe it's on the agenda for this evening as well. The total project cost is eight hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and eight dollars, the funding request is for five hundred and eight thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, we've already received OKI grant award of two hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars, so for the eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar project, city match will be sixty thousand six hundred and eight dollars, so this will be for traffic signal improvement, for the upgrades and to update aging traffic control equipment in an effort to maintain efficiently operating fourteen traffic signals along Witten and Kemper and Northland, the existing signal system on Witten is closed loop system, which communicates with a master controller for updating internal clocks and traffic timing, the master controllers are out of service life, they're no longer being manufactured and no longer repairable, so they need to be replaced. The updates will include upgrading communications using high-speed cellular communication and integrated into essentially controlled signal system with intersections that communicate over an IP network to the web and hosted the central server and software, the system will be managed with remote access to the system over the internet, the central control system will allow the city to monitor traffic and adjust in real time, each new signal will use radar traffic detection instead of the old detection loops, which had a higher rate of failure, the system is modular and expandable to incorporate additional intersections along mill and Sharon Road in the future, additionally, the traffic controller units have the capability of including future modules and processors for integration with connected and autonomous vehicle technology, so this is a major upgrade for our traffic signal and again, we've got, we've been working, we've got two grant sources on this and we would like the city to approve this and again, it's sixty thousand dollars out of our city, uh, traffic money and our, in our, uh, street, state highway and, uh, street money and for an eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar project, it's just a little over ten, uh, well over ten percent, or a little less than ten percent, uh, city funds on this particular project, so we recommend that city pass this this evening so we can sign the grant agreement and move forward with the construction or the, the process of bidding it out and, and, um, design.
Okay. Does this include any like signage or just technology?
It's just technology, yeah.
Okay, the next item is G, designated representative to the twenty twenty-three Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council.
Yeah, there's a, Chris, you're familiar with this a little bit.
Yeah, so the, this comes up every year, comes to designate two representatives, they will need to be residents of the city and what then Tax Incentive Review Council does for the county is review all of the agreements that, that are out there for things like enterprise zone and community investment areas, the commercial and industrial side of that, so Forest Park has a couple of active agreements, one that I think is ending this year is fry fasteners.
I'm sorry, what did you say, I didn't hear you, that's ending, I heard you say ending this year, but I didn't catch, catch the name.
There's a four-year enterprise zone agreement for fry fasteners when they built their building and that's, so that tax incentive is, is going away as it was planned to, so they'd be paying the full taxes on the property, but our representatives attend this meeting, review the agreements, vote on them, and then that recommendation is sent as a package to the county commissioners who, who pass them, so in this resolution, the names are the, our city manager, Don Jones, and, and the mayor, Aaron Brown.
And these are, these are, we're part of a larger committee and we review all of the tax incentives across the county, correct?
Right, but we, you'll, you'll only need to attend the, the part that's covers Forest Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be meeting for something like two days straight. And that should happen in, probably in July.
We need to, we need to make those appointments as soon as possible so we can have representatives on this, on that committee, talk with the mayor and he and I are willing and able to attend those meetings.
The last item is dedication of the John Charles Estates Drive to public use.
Chris would probably get sure, better than the rest of us, than me anyway.
So this is part of the development agreement that we have with the developers, that they would, at a very early stage, dedicate the right of way for the road to the public use forever, is how it's, it's phrased, and there's a couple of different kinds of plats out there that, that would go to the county, this is what's known as a dedication plat and it's for, specifically for dedicating public right of way, it's a little bit different from a record plat, which sets out the lots that will be owned by individual owners, that's going to come probably in July, I would guess, because it has to go through the planning commission, so there's a, a timing issue, or I say issue, but it, it probably, it helps everyone to get this in place as soon as possible and with a dedication plat, it does have to have approval of the city council, whereas a record plat has approval of the planning commission, just two different processes, so this approval by ordinance is the standard procedure and because of the timing, recommending that's be passed as an emergency ordinance so that it will take effect tonight.
This was part of the, of the development agreement?
Yeah.
And it's a requirement of the developer that they dedicate the land or the right of way to the city prior to begin, so that, so that when the, the road is built, the city will own, basically own the land or control the land and the road, so, but this again is part of the development agreement, is, is our requirement of them that they do this.
Yeah.
So this is what we required them to do before there, there was any construction.
So is that the one that's coming off Mill?
It's the one that's coming off of Waycross, this is the Waycross development with the sixty-four homes.
Yeah, oh, okay.
It's, it's the long cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that, that road that they're building, we required them to actually dedicate the, the land underneath it to the city before we would provide any city funding to.
I thought it was really not all those trees down.
Well, that's, that's where it'll be, yeah.
But I thought it was Mill, might be.
No, that's technically off of Waycross and, and Lincolnshire, a little bit behind Lincolnshire, but it's off of Waycross.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Don, I have a question regarding, so is it fifty-nine homes, what did I get, sixty plus?
Sixty-four homes is the, is the, there's five along Waycross.
Okay.
That aren't on the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
So they're kind of, they're not included in, they're included in the development agreement, they have to build them, but they're not included in the special assessments because they're not on the road.
Okay.
So only, only the fifty-nine on the road.
Okay.
Will be, will be subject to the special assessments.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any other question before close the work session?
Just a question to Don about the details on the traffic infrastructure, does that include the, the license plate?
No, that's not, those are separate, we are going to, I just got a little extra time, we are, those are separate pieces of equipment and we will be bringing back a, a report on what we've been, how they've been successful and what they've been doing, police department will be putting that out, I believe at the next meeting, we're going to bring it and as you, if you remember, we talked about, um, the, we would, the proposal originally was, and I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but let's say it was thirty cameras and we did.
Fifty?
Yeah, so this will be for some more cameras, I don't know if it's going to be for all of them, but we're going to talk about, talk with the police department and see, you know, expand maybe a few more specific spots, they've been successful on several high-profile events that have happened here, not, not just here, but you know, throughout the region. region, when cars have come through here, we're able to...
I'm just asking based on the, the detail what was stated in this, it's like, okay, it's...
It's pretty close.
Prepping for that type of equipment, but...
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, it won't, it's not, um, it, it's not, uh, connected to this at all, that's, that, those license plate, uh, readers are, are a separate standalone system, that's controlled within that system, so, and, uh, it's not a part of any of the actual, uh, uh, signalization or anything.
Okay.
Now, that may make it easier to install them because of the...
That's kinda where I'm going with it.
Yes, it could make it easier to install them.
It sets the, the foundation, so, when that equipment come in, then it'll be easily imposed into the infrastructure, so that's, that's how...
Yeah, right now, right now, the, um, it is, it is more expensive if there are the cellular, they're, they're cellular and they're, uh, solar, um, so those are the more expensive models, and if you could knock off a cellular, or knock off a solar, and plug them into an electric source, or, um, uh, you know, maybe not, maybe not even use the cellular, um, it may, it may make it cheaper, in, in terms of the cost of, uh, acquiring these, these devices, but, um, right now, you know, we're not even looking at...
Okay.
It, it, it may just be a, a good, a good side effect of, of this, that it come in, that it, that would help out, so, uh, but yes, it could easily have, particularly the electric part, 'cause we have actually, um, I think the ones on Wetton are plugged in, are connected to a power source, they're a plug, uh, versus a cellular, thanks for this.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
This will conclude the work session.